It is now 6:00 PM. It's time to begin the July 15th meeting of the Dawson County Planning Commission. We'll begin with an invocation by Mr. John Maloney.
Our heads, dear Lord, thank you for this opportunity to serve you. Thank you for this opportunity to be a part of this county. Lord, watch over us, watch over this meeting. Help us make decisions that will glorify you. In your son's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. All members here except for Mr. Hamby tonight. Approval of minutes, adoption of June 15th, Planning Commission minutes. Is there a motion, gentlemen?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion of second to approve the minutes, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. We have the agenda, and I think we need to make one change to that. Is there a motion?
To make a motion to move VA 25-10 to the end of the meeting.
Second. Alright, motion of second to approve the agenda with the one change. All in favor. Motion carries four zero. For speakers in favor or opposition to any application who have made contributions more than $250 to any local official campaign, there's a form that you'll need to fill out. New business, application for rezoning, ZA 24-14. Jim King, on behalf of Coleman Family Investments LLC and Bagley Land and Cattle Company LLC, has submitted an application to the proper authorities requesting land use amendment and a future land use map amendment to rezone 123.48 acres currently zoned RSR and RA to RS2 to construct 211-unit detached single-family community at two units per acre. The applicant is also seeking a future land use map amendment to redesignate parcel 088120 from the rural living character area to the suburban living character area as required for consistency with the proposed RS2 zoning designation. Properties are located at the southwest corner of State Route 9 and Dawson Forest Road, Dawsonville, Georgia, 30534, parcels 098002 and 088120. Is there someone here to speak for the applicant? Please state your name and write your name and address on the pad of paper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the ward. My name is Jim King, 131 Prominence Court, Dawsonville, Georgia. Here tonight, representing the Bagleys on the rezoning of 123 acres at the southwestern corner of highway, intersection of Highway 9 and Dawson Forest Road. I'd like to start out, there you go, I'd like to start out giving you a little history. I think tonight's case is really weighs heavily on the land use plan, and I'd like to give you a little bit of history on the land use plan and where it originated and what it means. The Georgia Planning Act was established by legislature in 1989 by the Georgia Legislature, and it's vital to smart growth. That's the reason they established the Planning Act was because it forces counties to plan for the future. So now, every county in the state is required to do a new comprehensive plan with a future land use plan for every 10 years. But most of them do it every five years because of the growth and trying to stay ahead of the growth. Dawson County is currently going through a land use plan revision. So it's a huge process. It involves, they send out public surveys, they mail out surveys, they include one in your tax bill. They have citizens committees that are appointed by the Board of Commissioners to work with the planning staff to develop the future land use plan. And there's a, and then it goes before, once, once they arrive at something that everybody agrees with, the planning staff agrees with, then it goes through the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners for approval. So, just to share a little bit about how this particular site fits in with the land use plan and the history of it. So in the 2000 and 2005 land use plans, this area, this tract, along with all the area around it, if you look at the inset, was designated as commercial and industrial. And this, about the same time, about right before 2005, the Board of Education purchased a school site right at the northwest corner of the intersection. In 2008, both tracks, both of these tracks and the adjacent tracks transitioned to mixed-use village. This is probably due to the fact that the school, Board of Education acquired the site for a school, so it was downzoning a little bit of the future land use for these parcels. However, mixed use is still a mixture of commercial, residential, and it carried with it, at the time it specified a maximum of 2.8 units per the acre. But that was for the overall, for all the commercial land, the residential land, so it created much, gave you a chance to do a much higher density than 2.8 units the acre, actually. Then in 2013, the first character area map was created. This area included both of these parcels, and both were designated as the mixed-use corridor, which the same allowance for the 2.8 units per acre. Then in 2018, the two subject tracks, along with the adjacent tracks, were designated as mixed-use village on the future land use plan. Very strangely, the tract across the street from this was, at that point, changed to industrial. And I really don't know why, but the only thing I can think of is maybe it was changed to industrial to create jobs along with the mixed-use area. So you'd have a more activity for this node. Then in 2023, suddenly, these parcels had been designated as mixed-use, industrial, commercial, higher intensities just around this node for the last 25 years. And then in 2023, they were downzoned or down-designated to suburban, suburban residential, living and rural living character areas. So, the, no, I don't understand why they were downzoned, maybe because the school was then there, but still, you know, it was a tremendous downzoning for this area. However, we've, this particular site and the one adjacent, or one across the street from it, we've been in for several rezoning hearings on both of these with much higher densities. The current zoning plan you see, we, features two, two units per acre net density. So that is, it comes out to about a 1.7 units per acre on gross density. The, and just how that compares to some of the surrounding zonings. The Etowah Reserve, which is just down the street and on the opposite side of Dawson Forest Road, has a net density of 2.2 units per acre. That's if you count just what's on the south side of the river. Everything that's on the north side of the river is part of a wetlands mitigation bank. So it's, it was included in the rezoning to come up with a overall density of one unit per acre. But if you, since it's not being used at all, it's in a wetlands mitigation bank, the real density for that project is 2.2 units per acre. And the Grove down behind Blacks Mill School is 3.19 units per acre. So, can you go back one slide, Priscilla? Thank you. So within the suburban living character area, which is what we are in, well, let me clarify something. The majority of our property is in the suburban living character area. There is about 15 or 20 acres of it. There's two parcels involved, and there's about 15 acres of that owned by the same owner that for some reason in the 2023 land use plan, it was divided. So for 23 years, they were all characterized at the same, or allocated as the same zoning on the future land use plan until 2023, and all of a sudden, they divided the Bagleys' property and the smaller tract, they put it in the rural living character area and the larger tract in the suburban living character area. And I'm not, not sure why that happened, but it's just the division between a parcel line. So in my opinion, that was, that was an error, that both of those parcels being owned by the same person should have both been designated as suburban, suburban living. With the rural living character area has a three-acre minimum, and suburban living is two units per acre. So there's a drastic difference between the two. And the development directly across the street from it, the Etowah Reserve, has a density of two point, more than 2.2 units per acre. So the suburban, oh, back one way. So within the suburban character area, which is the majority of our property is contained in, the maximum density is a net density of two units per acre. So net density is something that's just come about in the last year, maybe two years. And what that is, is it requires you to take out all of the creek buffers, steep lands, all the really unusable land, and come up with a net acreage, and then that net acreage multiplied times two units per acre gives you your net density. All the other zonings in this area, the ones that I've shown you as well, the others, were figured on gross units, gross density. And so the numbers that you're looking at, it's, it's hard to compare apples to apples because you're comparing, you know, our net density of 1.9 units the acre to what's across the street at 2.2 and what's down the street at 3.1 gross units the acre. So to compare apples to apples, ours is actually 1.7 units per acre gross, and that's the way you should compare those to the, to the other developments in the area. So we are going with, we are asking for RES2 development within the suburban living character area, which is allowed. That is allowed, an allowed use within the suburban living character area. It is not within the rural living character area, and that's why we're asking for a map change for the smaller parcel to be changed to suburban living. If you'll look at the suburban character area, the photographs at the bottom, the homes that are proposed that are supposed to characterize the suburban residential area, suburban character area. In a moment, I'll show you the homes that are proposed, and I'm pretty sure they use the same home. It's identical. Here it is. So what we're proposing tonight on this parcel is 211 homes, which meets the future land use plan, which meets all the regulations. We're not asking for any variances from the RES2 zoning, zoning category. And it's, the product that we're proposing is identical to what's in the, in the comprehensive plan. Here's some more elevations. And this is our, this is our land plan. You can see the amount of open space we're preserving still. 85-foot wide lots. The other neighborhoods that I spoke to you about earlier are 50 and 60-foot wide lots. These are 85-foot wide lots. It's the largest, largest thing I've presented, I think, since I've been doing stuff in Dawson County. So it's probably the, this is the nicest development, I think, that I've, that I've presented so far. And it meets the land use plan. It's far less dense than the last 25 years of land use plans. And we ask tonight for your approval. Thank you.
Is there any questions for the applicant? John, any questions for you?
It says, I was reading, it says to ask, because her residential rezoning is not consistent with the future land use plan carried into your saying it is.
That's only for the small parcel.
There's two parcels that, and one of them it is and one of them it isn't.
Correct.
Because one, one is designated for rural.
And because we're using both parcels is the reason they're saying that it's not consistent is because, yeah. But again, that's, both parcels were designated to the same category for 23 years, and then all of a sudden, they decided one of them would be different than the other one. And for 23 years, they were designated as something, as being allowed for 2.8 units per acre.
You're developing both parcels?
We are. They're both owned by the same owner.
Wanting to do one parcel one way and one parcel the other? Am I getting this?
No, no, they're wanting to do it all, like the higher density.
Okay.
Which, which per the land use plan, the smaller parcel would be, what'd you say, three-acre minimum?
I think that's not right.
Three-acre minimum lots. Any other questions?
One, could have some time for rebuttal.
Oh, sure. Yep. Alright, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the rezoning? Alright, seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Alright, please come forward and state your name and write your name and address on the pad of paper.
My name is Tiffany Georgia. I live at 252 Dawson Manor Drive. I've stood up here before talking about safety and infrastructure in our current community, and while we remain in this current moratorium, many of us in the community still have some concerns. We have some issues in Dawson County that need to be looked at and reviewed before we continue to invite more people to reside in this area. First of all, I believe Dawson County needs to be taking a look at the Highway 9 and Dawson Forest intersection and their current overall safety and functioning for those of us already residing in this community. It is well-known by those of us who live here and use that intersection that it already struggles to handle the current traffic with hundreds more homes already approved and still being built up Highway 9 and out Dawson Forest. When you've left Riverview Elementary and sat backed up past the fire station on Dawson Forest and watched an emergency vehicle come from Highway 9 North and try to navigate the two roundabouts to continue on Highway 9 South, and they have to drive up on the curb to get through the intersections, that's not safe for anyone. We can staff our EMS, police, and fire departments, but if they struggle to transport us or even get to us, we have failed. We can discuss the safety and traffic around Riverview Elementary. Riverview opened its doors in August of 2010, and we still have no school zone signage there. Parents have been asking and inquiring for a couple of years now, and there's really no excuse. We need flashing lights. Let's talk about the safety of our officers who are trying to direct traffic for the safety of the parents and students, and yet they themselves are in danger and in a precarious location with limited visibility. Riverview Elementary has one single entrance and exit, while every other school in the county has at least two. And we're going to dump a community with children who would also need to attend this school and need access right there at our only spot in and out. The road simply cannot The road simply cannot handle this kind of added traffic right there. We are adding increased risk to those students, parents, staff and others. I can only imagine how the traffic would back up in this proposed community as well as the Etowah Preserve and continue to increase that risk. Something is eventually going to go on this land. We know that, but let's do it responsibly. Let's consider all the factors that we're working with. Let's work on reducing the traffic burden, the risk at both of these intersections. Prepare for proper infrastructure, place overdue signage and consider less density that this community has been asking for. And since it's no longer just a rezoning request, it's a change in the character area. It is allowed on occasion based on our ordinances, but I don't think the community would look favorably on it at this time. They just want to know that they're being seen and heard. But in closing, I just want to ask you to deny recommending the rezoning and character area change that is being requested.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition? Please write your name and address on the pad and state your name.
Hello, my name is Shannon Stanford. I live off of Goodson Road near this development site and double roundabout intersection. This intersection and future planning is a big concern for me, my growing family and my neighbors. Tiffany did a great job outlining the safety concerns that we share, so I won't dwell on those too much further. However, I will be clear that we do not like this plan. The density, the lot sizes and the quality of build are still not aligned with the vision most of us have for this character area. In fact, I recently joined the long range planning commission or committee to, you know, hopefully help fortify the codes against poor community investments just like this one. So in short, we respectfully and simply request that you hold new construction in our beautiful county to a higher standard than this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition? Please write your name and address on the pad and state your name.
My name is Rick Marsh. I live in 113 Nashport Lane. I do have some questions about how are all these people going to get from 400 down to this subdivision? The roads will not handle it. They're just, there's not. Where are all these kids going to go to school at? Who's going to pay for all that? That's not something that the people from Dawson County, which we've done great up until now, have had to do. Well, we, we built a new high school and a new middle school. There's no way, there's 200 houses there and then the other subdivisions that are being built, enough is enough. The road systems need to be brought up before another scoop of dirt's turned for a house. I, I just, I don't see how it can continue. You guys call yourself a planning, well, let's plan for the future rather than jump back, because there's one thing that I haven't heard yet. When are they going to do something about a hospital? We have none. I just wanted to say my piece, so please consider that when you let this come in here and take over our county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none, we'll close it to the board for discussion. So we have a rezoning that is also modifying the, the future land use map. Despite whatever it was in the past, it was, you know, we had a process in 2023 and, and it was designated what it is now. And it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan and in keeping with the future land use map. Any discussion?
Kind of feel like if the land use plan wasn't, hadn't been redone so recently, might be something else to consider. It's, we're only talking, 2023 is when it was redone?
Correct.
Clarification question, please, sir, Mr. Horns. Do you want to allow for rebuttal time for the applicant?
Oh, sure. Yeah, do you have anything else to add, Jim?
If you would, please pan back to one of the earlier land use plans. Maybe the 18 or, oh wait, yeah, okay. One thing, if you'll notice on the land use plan, this area, all the parcels around this intersection, they're part of a node. Historically, transportation nodes have been growth centers on, it's from a land planner's standpoint, that's where you want your growth. You know, dating back to wagon trails and, and shipping harbors. You know, everything, everything grew out from transportation nodes and today it's an automobile. That's what transportation nodes are today. And that's why this particular area around the, around the intersection of Highway nine and Dawson Forest is designated for higher development. And it has been for 25 years is because it's, it's a node. It's an activity node, a growth node. The areas along Dawson Forest for between here and 400 are not, even though they've already, you know, the other developments have sprung up along there. This has always been designated for a higher intensity development. The other thing I want you to look at is on the land use plan, everything pretty much north of the river is either an agriculture or conservation. And that's because the land use committees from 2000 to date have looked at Dawson County. And from a planning perspective, you have to plan for growth. You have to put it somewhere. People are going to come here regardless. So the, the theory or the concept behind the land use plan, it was even when I was a commissioner, is preserve the north part of the county and let all the growth happen in the south part of the county. And that's what the land use plan reflects. But if you start taking the south part of the county where you have all the, your growth projected for and planned for, and the other thing is planning for that because, you know, roads are planned, when you have a land use plan, you plan for higher densities, more traffic. So your road, your roads planned, your capital improvements planned, everything is planned off of that land use plan. And that's why those schools are there today. Because I remember in, it's like 2004, 2005, when the Board of Education wanted to buy that property across the street and they came to our board and said, you know, we're, we want to purchase this property. And I was like, why do you want to purchase this property way out in the middle of nowhere? And they said, it's because your land use plan says this is where all the growth is going to happen. So we're going to put it, we're getting ahead of the curve. We're going to put our schools where all the growth is. So they'll be near, so you cut down on your traffic. You're not driving halfway across the county to take your kids to school. So this is a plan, this is the master plan for the county. Everything is based on the master plan for the county, your infrastructure, your schools, everything. We're consistent with that. We've got one small parcel that's, for whatever reason, not consistent with that. And it was for 23 years. It just happens two years ago, somebody decided to, you know, that split, split Mr. Bagley's property into and designate part of it as rural. But this development conforms with the master plan. So I beg you to, you know, stick with your master plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close it to the board for discussion. Any discussion? If not, is there a motion?
I think with this, understanding that there, there was a break in, in the two parcels, getting that worked out to understand that, how it happened, why it happened. I would have to have a better feel for it. First of all, that is my main, the second concern is the infrastructure I don't feel in this area is up to par at this point. I know that planning, we, we plan for it, we want the growth in this area, but the growth is growing faster than the infrastructure is. And I would like to see the county focus more on infrastructure, roads, getting this thing with the school worked out. I've been through there in the morning as well. When those kids come out of the school at the, at the grade school, you've got to go around the roundabouts to go back the other way. And it backs up for miles. And this is going to be right smack dab in the middle of it. I would like to feel comfortable knowing that we've got a plan to help with infrastructure before I'm going to vote yes on this. So I want to make a motion to deny at this time based upon infrastructure development.
I'll second. Motion in a second to recommend denial. All in favor? Motion carries four zero to recommend denial. This will be heard at the August 21st Board of Commissioners meeting. So for or against, that's when you need to show up. Okay, next. Do we need to go on to item K, Richard? Or can we do a motion to move on to the variance?
See if the applicant is here to kind of speed up their time and get them out.
Right. Do we have somebody here to speak for the Aravane Ganison? Okay. Do you want to, somebody want to do a motion to move this to the next item, VA 25-10?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to move VA 25-10 to the next item on the agenda.
Second, anybody? All right, all in favor? All right, motion carries. Next item, VA 25-10, Aravane Ganison requests the following variance from the setback requirements outlined by the Dawson County Land Use Resolution for Property Zone C, PCD. The applicant requests a reduction of 30 feet from the required 50 feet building setback to remain no less than 20 feet from the property line. The applicant requests that the setback reduction be applied to the property lines fronting Mancy Park Drive and the property line fronting Dawson Forest Road. The applicant seeks a reduction for the development of a small scale grocery store on the subject property. Is there someone here to speak for Mr. Ganison?
Yeah, so I'm actually speaking on behalf of the client, GPR Realty.
Please write your name and address on the pad of paper.
Sounds good.
And state your name.
So my name is Arvind Ghaneshan. Here speaking on behalf of the variance that we'd requested. I appreciate you guys moving it to the end of the schedule there today. Was running super late, so I really appreciate that. Yeah, so I know we had made a little bit of a change and I think Priscilla had sent over those documents to you guys. So our original request was having the 50 foot front setback pushed down to 20 as well as a buffer from 40 to 10. But after the last month's meeting, we went in and revised that. We also spoke with the neighboring land parcel member, the one that owns the Angel Learning Center right next door, spoke to them about our plan, let them know kind of what's going on. They're very on board. They also mentioned that they might be doing some expansion and stuff on their own. So they were like, hey, based off of what you guys are saying, we don't seem to have a problem on our adjacent neighboring side there. However, we did want to revise our request. Again, as I said, we moved that from the front setback from 50 to 30 and the buffer from 40 to 20. We went ahead and sent over the new change revisions as well. Again, the main goal here is to have a neighborhood retail kind of grocery store that services a lot of the residential in that area. And that's kind of what we're trying to look to have that ample space for.
Is there any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the variance? Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the variance? Seeing none, we'll close it to the board for discussion. So we have a request for a variance from 50 to 30 feet and a buffer variance from 40 to 20. Is there any discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion is second to approve the variance. All in favor? Motion carries four zero. You have your variance. All right, item K, public hearings, proposed fee schedule updates, first of two required public hearings, second public hearing to be held at the 8:21 Board of Commissioners meeting. Mr. Richard, would you like to present the fee schedule updates?
You will please open the public hearing and see if anybody would like to speak about community development department fee schedule changes. And then once anybody speaks for or against, then close that and then, you know, y'all have discussion. The fee schedule was last adopted in 2022 and as part of the smart growth, slowing things down moratorium on residential developments, there've been a few things that staff has been looking at. One is the fee schedule, one is the county code related to land use and subdividing land developments. So in terms of the fee schedule, we looked at other comparable North Georgia counties like Barrow, Haversham, Jackson, Lumpkin, Oconee and Pickens. And we got input from the county attorney's office on possible proposed changes. So what we're looking at is clarifying fees for items that not, have not been line item listed such as demolition, retaining walls, fences, solar panels and electric vehicle charging stations and confirming in the fee schedule what those amounts are. So they're, they're fully transparent and folks don't have to call in or, or, you know, email us or ask. The signed permit fee, we're using an old type of calculation that is for valuation and building permit fees used to also be based on, you know, somebody coming in saying they want to get a building permit to build a house and telling us the valuation. And that was what their permit fee was based on. Well, state law has changed and so the building permit fees a while ago were changed. But now we'd also like to propose to change the signed permit fee. So again, just instead of valuation of what the applicant tells us be based on square footage, and that's similar to other cities and counties in North Georgia. In addition, would be a soil erosion plan review fee in-house. We are working towards what hopefully will be a better goal for the community where in the past, the county has been just a local issuing authority to get a land disturbance permit, which means plans had to be reviewed by federal staff with NRCS, a part of USDA as part of reviewing on behalf of the state of Georgia. And right now, that, that federal part has been downsized. The NRCS person locally here retired and that position was not filled. And so right now, the state is actually doing that review where it's not in-house. It takes longer, plans have to be sent to Athens before somebody can get a land disturbance permit reviewed and approved by the Athens Office of the State, Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission. And so Dawson County, as well as the city of Dawsonville and Forsyth County are going through this process to be total in-house reviewer. Go from what's called local issuing authority to having a memorandum of agreement with the state of Georgia. So we would just do the entire review as Dawson County staff. Because of that added time, we propose to, to add a fee on that for plan review. calculation of business license, you know, that's also officially known as the occupational tax certificate. Right now, we do it based on number of employees. And some of our staff went to a conference for continuing education of the state group, Gabto, the business license officials and saw a presentation about how the trend is switching from the number of employees as a basis for calculating what your annual fee is for a business, for your business license. Changing that to annual gross revenue is something that's always, already something that, you know, from the smallest business like my wife with her one employee business to the biggest, that's something they're already using. And so annual gross revenue is a more stable amount for, for having that. The number of employees can vary, sometimes weekly or monthly with, with companies. And so this would pose to, again, change from calculating business license fees from a per employee basis to based on the annual gross revenue. And then there would be a base fee, let's say, you know, again, like my wife, it was year one for my wife's new business of one person. We would have just a base fee starting out for if it was a brand new business, one We would have just a base fee starting out for if it was a brand-new business, wanting to get a new business license that had not had a previous year's annual gross revenue. Just something else is short-term rental permits. We're having, uh, more and more folks who do not renew, and so we would add a late penalty. Um, just to note that impact fees are totally separate. Alcohol license fees are totally separate. So if you don't mind, Mr. Hornsley, before y'all start discussing, uh, discussion, open it as a public hearing.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak on the, uh, proposed fee schedule updates? All right, seeing none, we'll close it to the board for discussion. Any discussion, gentlemen? I believe they, uh, would like a recommendation vote, so.
Recommend to move forward.
Motion to second to recommend approval of the fee schedule updates. All in favor? Motion carries four zero. Next item, um, updates by planning and development, announcement of the community development growth management survey available through the website until July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. And, uh, I think you're going to discuss code changes, potential code changes.
Part we have had of our community survey to get input about potential code changes is still very much in draft form. We've received over a thousand, um, submittals. And because it's through Survey Monkey and they have some, um, some guardrails, you know, you can't just, you know, I can't go in there and, um, ten times in a row fill out the survey. I can just fill it out one time, same with any of our citizens. So to have over a thousand individual survey responses is great. We really appreciate that. And, um, that appears to be reinforcing what the direction already was in terms of the code changes, which is what I'll go over just for discussion. And if y'all want to, even though it's not public hearing and y'all will not vote, if y'all want to get public input tonight, that's great. We'll get official public input in August and have an official item for public hearing for y'all's vote. The code changes are, uh, based on the desire by citizens and the long-range planning committee and the planning commission and board of commissioners. A- as a consensus, what we're hearing is to slow things down and have, um, larger lot properties. And so what we're looking at is, on the one hand, with event centers, that's something that was discussed last year for potential code changes. Right now, it's just allowed by zoning. But an event center is a business. And so there are concerns by public safety and public works that a, um, business use of property in a rural area can have potential significant impact. So instead of being allowed by right, event centers would need a zoning case. They would first, um, the applicant would first need to come in, provide us with a summary, um, business summary and a concept site plan, and really discuss it with staff to get initial comments about what would be needed as a, um, business that is commercial code, not residential code, for standards of permitting and inspections. And they would need a zoning case, a special use. They would need to come before y'all. The property would stay zoned agriculture, but it would need special use recommendation from y'all and approval from board of commissioners. And then also we've haven't, we've continued to have concerns about short-term rentals. So as proposed, the minimum lot size would be half an acre for a short-term rental, a new proposed one. We have some very small lots on the lake, even if they're on septic, that might be quarter acre or third of an acre. And the smaller the lot, the closer the homes, if there's a short-term rental, it can have potentially more of a negative nuisance impact. And so, um, there, there would be some clarification about short-term rentals. Confirm that it is, um, intended to be, unless somebody has an event center where they specifically address it during the zoning case, if somebody wants to have more than one. Otherwise, on somebody's private property, uh, it's, it's only to be one, one short-term rental per property. Even if they have a house and a guest house, it's only to be one. The chapter one seventeen is the Georgia four hundred overlay district, and there's a lot of guidelines. It's a very good overlay district, but it does have a lot of items that staff cannot enforce, where it says something is a good idea, something, uh, may be done, something, something should be considered or encouraged. That's not enforceable. So the proposal is to change, um, what is realistic and enforceable to shall and must. In terms of one twenty-one, that's the land use section, and that would be the biggest amount of changes for new residential development. More open space would be required. More perimeter buffering would be required, where it's a minimum of fifty foot around the entire perimeter of a new development would be buffer. Have a higher level of architectural standards, more masonry, more windows. Delete townhomes from the list of allowed uses in the RT district. RT is residential town, and there have been concerns about townhomes in some places where it's farther away from Highway four hundred. And so, um, you know, to, to be straightforward, there, there are a lot of citizens that do not want any more townhomes on Dawson Forest Road in particular. So that's the feedback we've got on that. We've got a zoning district called Plan Commercial District. But there have been concerns i- from the past about previously zoned properties as they developed and trying to get the commercial build out, where it's intended to be a mixture of residential and commercial. But we understand in the post-COVID world, the commercial demand has tanked so much deliveries to people's houses. Um, a variety of factors led to, you know, a softening of the commercial market. So that district would be frozen essentially, kind of like VCR and VC, a couple of our districts. So there could not be new rezoning to that planned commercial development. Proposed larger lot sizes, larger buffers for residential developments. There would need to be a pre-application meeting and pre-meeting. And that would put the burden even more on the applicant. So before y'all ever see a rezoning application, if somebody wants to do fifty or more units, they would have to meet with the local community closest to that property. So every property owner within five hundred feet of that property would need to receive notification of an upcoming public meeting. That would not be a zoning because it would be before the zoning case. And this would need to be in the evening, um, not on a holiday, not on a weekend. And there are certain parameters that we've noted. It, we're sort of borrowing a page from Cherokee County, which has successfully used this process. And so also, um, you know, other things like amenities, there would be more requirements for amenities in residential developments. Uh, we do have a zoning district that's not used very much. It's called the heavy business or CHI. And, um, we've got several commercial districts and one industrial district. But there are some places where just straight industrial may not be more appropriate. There could be a transition of essentially heavy commercial, light industrial. And so right now, this heavy commercial district does not allow for light industrial, CHI. So some uses would be allowed, warehousing, distribution, things like that. As proposed, it would restrict the amount of variances that occur, that can occur. Y'all are seeing a good bit of variances on setbacks. And so let's say somebody wants to reduce side setback for a house to four feet or five feet. That's very close. The building official, fire marshal have concerns. The closer you get to that property line. So, uh, as an example, the variance restriction would be, if you want to reduce that setback, you can do to a certain amount, but in the case of side setbacks, it would be seven feet would be the max. Um, just after that, you would not be eligible. Changing the density calculation probably makes sense for new residential developments to return to the pre-two thousand twenty-three level. Mr. King, as the applicant mentioned, the fact that trying to determine net acreage versus gross acreage is a more complicated formula. It's less well-understood by our citizens, um, and staff at times. So your typical gross acreage calculation is, is very simple, very easy, very understandable. Somebody has a hundred acres. If your density is two units per acre, your max would be two hundred units allowed. Just really a return to that, you know, keep it simple in terms of calculation. And, um, in terms of variances that y'all see occasionally for lake lots especially, y'all will see somebody who wants to do a very good project. Let's say they want to redo an old lot with a nice big house or a nice big detached garage. And maybe their setback is ten feet, and they want it to be nine feet or eight feet. It's a very small reduction, then that can be handled in-house by staff as proposed. But that would be a max cap of twenty percent. So again, if somebody wants to reduce from ten feet to seven feet, they would have to come before y'all for a variance. And we would limit the number of rezonings per month to no more than five and no more than one residential development of fifty units or more. Chapter one thirty-three is the subdivision section. Public Works really did a deep dive into that, and so they, you know, proposed a bunch of essentially standards that would be, um, stricter for new residential developments.
Okay. Excellent.
You want to see if there's any public comment?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, would anyone like to, uh, offer any comment on the community, community development growth management survey or the code changes?
I have a question for the net versus gross. I kind of like the net. Mainly, I understand maybe the formula is simpler, but it helps me. It helps development not be able to include that unbuildable port, part of the land into the total, you know, density. To me, I hate, I, I always frustrated the fact we're, we're trying to do two units per acre, but they're including, but they're including unbuildable acreage that there's wetlands or there's buffers or there, or the topo is unbuildable, but they're including that in there. I mean, why would we want to go back?
Yes, sir. So the offset would be increasing the required amount of green space or open space. Because essentially, right now, sometimes we're winning, sometimes we're losing. Sometimes there's really hard-to-develop land, like with, um, the fifty-three frontage and Frank Bruce Road frontage, Crestwind Development that y'all saw. That land had all kinds of steep slope and, um, state waters. Uh, I mean, it, it got into, you know, the trout screen streams and, you know, a potential, you know, bat endangered species. And so in that case, it was a big winner for the constrained lands net acreage. But there are other times too where it's not in floodplain, it's not state waters, it's not dramatically steep slope. Every, every part of the county is going to be hilly or mountainous, but there are some parts better, easily developable than others. And in some cases, there's the potential to lose to have less than, you know, thirty or forty percent of open space. So it's essentially kind of a balancing out of, if we go back to gross acreage, let's increase the amount of green space or open space.
Okay, so I see what you're doing. You're, you're, you're increasing the amount of the green space.
Yes, sir.
Required. Okay.
Yeah, just because, you know, even if it's two per gross acre, there may be no way they're going to actually get that because of the green space requirements and lot size and that kind of thing.
Okay.
Um, one comment I had was on the, um, some of the architectural. I know there was a, an emphasis on, um, masonry finishes. I mean, me personally, I think you can have a really nice-looking house with just, you know, hardy siding. So I don't know. I mean, that's just something to look at, but I don't know that I'd want to dictate that every house has to be. I'd be more interested in, in the various house plans in a neighborhood than, than they all have to be brick or that kind of thing. But that's just my, my two cents. Any other comments? So we'll, we'll hear this at the next month's meeting, uh, as an item to vote on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, uh, if that's it, then next item is adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn? All right, we are adjourned.